Okay, Mayor, I will go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you. All right, we will start with the flag sleuth. So Amy, if you have our illustrious flag. Is it not showing up tonight?
Oh, are you not seeing it?
Yeah, I am. I see it. I see it.
Oh, okay, I don't. Wow, that's weird. All right, so if you could join me in the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I wonder why I am not seeing it. Oh, well, guess I wasn't there.
You don't see you.
All right, so next item roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
I'm here having technical difficulties with my zoom.
Hit your switch camera button.
Switch camera button.
There it is. I was here the whole time.
I hit something, who knows. All right, video statement, Amy, please.
So this meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. And tonight's meeting replays on Monday, June 29th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14.
Great, thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda.
Move approval?
I heard an approval from Jeannie. Do I hear a second from Portia? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Close enough, all right. Um, Amy, do I have to do a roll call? Sorry.
Uh, Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next item, Amy.
Next item is presentation number four, City Employees Service Recognition Presentation.
All right, good evening, members of the City Council. I'm Chris Boyd, the City Manager. And tonight, we are presenting a group of employees who have reached a very important milestone with the City of Citrus Heights. Between January and June of 2020, these employees celebrated either their five, 10, 15, or 20 years of service to the city. And this is a longstanding tradition we have here with our employees in the city. We typically honor employees who have reached their significant milestone anniversary in person, and the council is always present for that. But since that's not possible at this time, we have asked each of them to join us by video and be recognized by the City Council. Additionally, each recipient will receive the coveted Employee Service Award later this year. So I will begin by introducing two members of my executive team, and then I'll hand it over to other managers to present their staff members. So first up, Colleen McDuffie. So Colleen is celebrating 20 years of service with the city. In January, she, the Community Development Director, Colleen McDuffie, celebrated 20 years, and she continues, as we all know, to be a seasoned and valuable asset on the team. She was hired in 2000 as a senior planner, became the planning manager in 2005. And during her tenure, she's had a significant role in many projects, such as the creation of the Stock Ranch specific plan, reorganization of the city zoning code, the adoption of our first greenhouse gas reduction plant, as well, she was instrumental in bringing Costco, Walmart, the SBA, City Hall, Dignity Health Medical Office Building, and Mitchell Farms and others to fruition. So upon her promotion to Community Development Director last year, she's been instrumental in guiding both our Sunrise Mall specific plan process and the Sylvan 40 property purchase and eventual sale. Both of these projects will be pivotal for the future success of the city. And we really, and always have, relied on Colleen's planning knowledge to get us there. So a big thank you and congratulations to Colleen McDuffie.
Good job, Colleen.
And, and Colleen is, and council's free when we're done with the whole program to say whatever you like. Colleen is with us tonight as well. You probably can, can see that. So next is Rhonda Rivera. I don't think Rhonda's with us. She's out of state, so it'd be, wouldn't be unlike her to pull that off, but I don't think she's with us. But she celebrated 15 years of service with the city. And in April, Assistant City Manager Rhonda Rivera reached 15 years. She leads major policy development and administrative projects on behalf of the city. And she's always set the city on the right path to its financial future. She began her time with the City of Citrus Heights in 2005 as a Senior Management Analyst and Human Resources Manager, where she most notably assisted with the rollout of our Police Department. When I was the new Police Chief, Rhonda and I were, were partners and colleagues in, in, in building the Police Department. She was soon after there, soon after promoted to Human Resources City Information Director in 2009, where her duties expanded to overseeing Human Resources, City Information, Community Partnerships, Risk Management, and Labor Relations. Then Rhonda was promoted to Assistant City Manager in October of 2017. She currently, in her department, oversees the divisions of Finance, Human Resources, Risk Management, and Information Technology. So thank you and a big congratulations to Assistant City Manager Rhonda Rivera for 15 years. Thank you, Rhonda. And with that, to keep moving, I'm going to turn it over to Monica Alejandra as our Human Resources Manager for the next group of employees.
Thank you, Chris. I'm pleased to recognize our next employee, Brandon Ophiana. So Brandon began his career with the City of Citrus Heights as an information technology intern in 2004. Um, he, uh, his techni, his technical skills are fabulous, and he is actually celebrating his 16th year. Um, so he's 15 plus one more. Brandon quickly worked his way to a full-time IT technician. One of the most notable accomplishments of Brandon's career is his contribution to the rollout of the city's new Police Department in 2006, where he managed the patrol car mobile computers. In 2008, Brandon was reclassified to a senior IT technician, taking on more responsibilities such as management of the mobile wireless projects, license plate recognition system, and earned his certification as the city's security camera technician. Brandon is not only appreciated for his hard work and dedication, but we also appreciate his fantastic sense of humor, his excellent customer service, and his positive attitude, which was highlighted during the challenging times of the chaotic, in the chaotic situation surrounding the COVID pandemic. Brandon remained calm and collected under pressure and delivered exceptional service and support with the same fantastic smile you see in this photo. So thank you to Brandon and congratulations on 16 years of service to our city. Next up, we have our, from Administrative Services Team, is Ariel Spawn Cellar. Ariel is, um, is celebrating five-year anniversary with the City of Citrus Heights come June 29th of this year, so just in about a week. Ariel began her career with the city as an office assistant in 2015 and quickly promoted to the position of Program Assistant. And she is currently serving as a Program Analyst in Human Resources. Ariel has truly been an asset to the city and HR, especially with her positive attitude and her desire to help all people. Ariel provides and, uh, provides valuable input and solutions to a variety of HR challenges. She is a great team player. She frequently volunteers to work for city-sponsored events, providing excellent customer service to the Citrus Heights community. She's very instrumental in the Administrative Services Department by supporting many aspects of human resources. We are truly lucky to have her on our team. So congratulations to Ariel and thank you for your service to the city. And I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Colleen McDuffie.
Good evening, and I'm going to recognize Allison Demudis, who is celebrating 20 years of service. She started here in March of 2000. And if you, she looks familiar here, as you see her picture here. Uh, you may have seen her on one of many fun and informative Facebook Live events, as well as around town. She is a longtime resident of Citrus Heights. Allison is an Associate Planner. Um, and I, one of the things I would say is she is really best known and well-known for her creativity and ability to think outside the box. Um, a history quickly of Allison's career here with the city. She joined the city in 2000 as an administrative assistant. And in 2001, she became a planning technician. 2005, she was reclassified to a Senior Planning Technician, then Junior Planner. And then most recently, in 2012, she became an Associate Planner. Um, at City Hall, Allison is known for her superior customer service and successful management of multiple projects. Um, just a couple of her recent, um, projects that she has really shepherded is she created the city's residential arborist program, whereby any resident in the city can contact us and we can provide an arborist to come out and look at the trees on their property. And that program, as well as some other endeavors she oversaw, led to Citrus Heights being designated a Tree City USA for the past two years. Um, another recent example is she managed the entitlement processing for the Sunrise, Sunrise Point project, which is the city's first affordable housing project since about 2000. So since she's been here. So Allison, thank you very much for your 20 years of service to the city and congratulations on this milestone.
So I'd like to talk about Frida Morales. She's celebrating her 15 years of service. Frida joined the city in 2005 as an office assistant and was promoted to Program Assistant in 2009. In 2016, she was promoted again to Engineering Technician 1 and then to Engineering Tech 2 in 2019. She currently assists with the General Services Department. Anything related to engineering, Frida's there, playing a significant role in the city's encroachment permit process, which issues on average over 850 permits a year. She's always looking for ways to help her community. She's a resident of Citrus Heights, looking to improve efficiency in our department and always looking to help increase traffic safety on the roadways. Congratulations, Frida. Your hard work and dedication is a valuable asset to the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Leslie. I, I had to look at the pictures to see who was talking since.
I'm sorry.
Nobody introduced you or you didn't introduce yourself, so, but thank you.
Well, I will turn it over now to Chris Myers.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd like to recognize Darcy Carpenter. She's celebrating 15 years of service with the City of Citrus Heights, having started in 2005 as an office assistant in the General Services Department. In 2009, she was promoted to Program Assistant, and then in 2013, to Event and Community Center Technician. Darcy was instrumental in the opening of the Community Center in 2010, helping to create and build the operational foundation from scratch. In addition, she is responsible for the scheduling and training of staff for all the community center events. Darcy is very professional and personable, working with over 250 clients at the center. Darcy is always smiling and going the extra mile to ensure client events are successful and exceed their expectations. She is an invaluable member of the Citrus Heights team. Darcy, thank you and congratulations on your 15 years of service. Now I, now I hand it over to Regina.
Thank you. So last, but certainly not least, we have Kelly Cunningham, celebrating her five years of service. Kelly started here with the city, uh, was May of 2015, and she has definitely made her mark here at the city. We call her a wooer, so she has a very positive and helpful attitude and is always thoughtful and ready to lend a hand wherever is needed. She helps support and great customer service and has a wonderful reputation here at City Hall working as a teammate to all of her coworkers. She supports several areas of the General Services Department, including capital improvement program, the drainage and stormwater program, our maintenance project, our solid waste waste management program, and a variety of special duties and projects. And of course, represents General Services Department and the First Impressions Team. So congratulations, Kelly, on your five-year accomplishment here at the City of Citrus Heights.
Woo-hoo.
So now it's going to go over to Chris.
Well, Mayor, uh, that's the, that are, that is our recipient for, for the year, so thank you.
Well, thank you, folks. I mean, the banker and me couldn't help but add that up. So that's 110 years worth of service between all of you folks. So thank you for that, Colleen, Rhonda, Brandon, Ariel, Allison, Frida, Darcy, and Kelly. I, I do have to say you, uh, you know, one of the things that I like best about working for the city is it, it's pretty easy to govern when you've got a great staff behind you backing you up. And, you know, everywhere I go, without exception, people talk about, you know, how Citrus Heights used to be, how it is now, how, how they like it, how it's changing. And to me, that's all because of the hard work that you all do each and every day with your full-time gig. You know, for us council members, it's part-time, but it's nice that we don't have to deal with a lot of other things that other cities do. And it's because we have a great, great staff behind us. So thank you for everything each and every one of you do. Keep it up. You know, especially these times now, um, where you're having to work, you know, differently, but you're still working. So that's, you know, I, I can't thank you enough. So I'll give my other council members a moment if they want to say a word to you.
So go ahead.
Thank you, Red. So, well, I just want to echo Jeff Scott's, um, and there are certain ones that I can remember when you were first hired, and Colleen, you're one of them. I know Janet Wazir brought you over. I believe she, we stole you from Roseville, which always makes it a happy day for Citrus Heights. And, uh, and then Rhonda Rivera, I remember Kathy Capiola hired her. And, uh, and Ariel, I remember when you, when you first came over. So, and of course, Darcy, I've worked with you probably more closely than many of them with like events I put on at the Community Center. And, and everything that your, your managers have said about all of you is, is true. Everything is true. So thank you so much for your years and years of service to the city. And, you know, Jeff said it, we couldn't, we couldn't do without you. You are the, uh, where the rubber meets the road. So we're very honored to have you on our staff.
Um, so I would add thank you to everybody. Um, it's, I think, a really good reflection when you see employees that want to stay for so long. And, and so, but, um, I just want to mention a few. And the, some of them are behind the scenes more, some of them are in front more often, but, um, and again, nothing to minimize any of those listed, but, uh, Colleen, Rhonda, Allison, Darcy. Uh, these are people that their thumbprint is on, uh, the, the City of Citrus Heights. We're not who we are today without these great people. And we've been extremely lucky to have you, and we will be extremely lucky to see you stay. And so please keep doing the good work that you do and, and know that, um, you know, when you put your head on the pillow tonight, know that Citrus Heights is a success because of you guys. No doubt about it, because of you guys. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I'd just like to add congratulations to, uh, everyone on your, your milestones are very significant. Um, thank you. I enjoy working with each and every one of you. You make our city run, and you make us all look good. And, uh, we really appreciate that. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks again to, uh, I noticed most, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, all for all the things you've done. You've made the city a great place, a tremendous place to live. And it's one of the reasons why we came to live in Citrus Heights when we first bought our home. Just dealing with each and every one of you on a, on a daily basis has been a joy. And I hope that you all stay with us well until your retirement. Thank you again.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, thanks again to all of you again. Great job. None of you have aged at all since you've, uh, been hired, you know, unlike the council members. But, uh, if any of you want to say anything, feel free. You're not obligated to. But just nice to see some of your smiling faces after several months of not seeing them. So thanks for sticking around and continuing to work.
Thank you.
All right, Amy, next item, please.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay, we'll start with Portia.
So I had a Sacramento Metro Cable Television Commission meeting this past week, and nothing really to report. We approved the fiscal year budget for 2021, um, looked over our general fund and PEG fees, and approved all those things. They all look to be in order. And we'll wait and see if the Cable Commission will be here in 2024, if we'll have to be decommissioned.
Oh, wow. All right, Jeannie.
Thanks. Um, Regional SAN is not meeting until, uh, the third week in July, so I won't have any reporting on that for a while. But I did have some activity these last couple of weeks. Quality of Life Committee met and we had the, the special meeting earlier that, that ruled, um, ruled out the recommendations that we made. So that was significant. Um, PAL Board also met last week, and we have been working for a long time, probably well over a year, to get, um, a spot at the Bingo Parlor, because those are very, very rare, um, to open up. And we have, um, achieved that. So starting in July, we will be there on Fridays from 3:45 until about 9:00 p.m. And, um, volunteers on the board and the Police Department will be doing our, our work. And, um, Portia, great time to join the PAL Board. So this has been something for us, because this is a great way for us to raise funds and to, um, achieve some of our loftier goals. And so, uh, I expect that that will continue on for the long term. So that was very exciting to see that finally, um, become an active, uh, program. And the other thing from PAL is that our explorers have begun to meet, uh, in person with social distancing again. They were very glad to see each other face to face. And so those programs have been ongoing, uh, virtually, but really, uh, good for them. They were very happy to be back together again. And then I just wanted to also, um, uh, mention, I was on a webinar the last evening, put on by our very own chief, um, good audience, and to present the upcoming initiative that called Keeping California Safe. And this was a big part of what he did last year as the President of the Ch, Chiefs Association. We, as a council, um, probably a year and a half ago, uh, approved a resolution to support this initiative, which if passed, will undo much of the damage that has been done by the passing of AB 109, Prop 47, and Prop 57, all three of which were misnamed to make the public think they were getting something they weren't getting. So my hope, and more on that as it rolls out, but very good presentation by our chief. Did us proud one more time. So thanks, Chief, and that's all I had to order, um, to report.
Thank you, Jeannie. Brett?
Well, I would say that, uh, from Jeannie's remarks, I'm just shocked that anybody would ever, um, uh, name a initiative or something to vote on by a name that's misleading, but.
Oh, Brett.
Shocked. Um, uh, no airport meeting today, uh, that's, uh, fine. And, uh, but more importantly, uh, Chando's Tacos is open. And so if you haven't got down there, get over to Sylvan Corners, uh, and, uh, that's some good food right there. Enjoy. Um, it's hot, uh, so please, please, people, don't leave your pets in cars. Come on. And if you see a pet in a car that's distressed, um, I'm sure that, uh, uh, the city manager won't be happy that I say this, but, uh, go ahead and break the window. And, uh, you know, there's no problem. They can send me the bill, but, uh.
I support you on that. I'm with you on that.
All right. Um, if, uh, if you need a place to cool down, if you haven't heard, the mall is open, as far as I know, it's still open. And, uh, get on over there and, and enjoy their air conditioning and buy something. And, uh, you know, let's get that, uh, uh, back to a lively place. So, uh, please enjoy the mall and get out and, uh, while you still can, hopefully. And, uh, enjoy our, your restaurants and stuff like that. Um, um, I'll give another shameless plug to Rosie's Best Breakfast in, in, uh, in Citrus Heights. And so just get out, go do some stuff, have some fun, be careful, be careful, and, uh, like it up. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Miller?
Um, yeah, if you see my dog in the truck, please don't break the window. I have the air conditioner running without the keys in it. That's, um, for our little princess there. Um, a week ago Wednesday, uh, attended the, well, did a Zoom meeting for the Cap de Cap, uh, or, I'm sorry, the Capitol Corridor, uh, JPA. Ridership between Sacramento and the Bay Area is down to about 10%. to about 10%. It's pretty dismal. But of course, the Bay Area is still locked down a little tighter than we are. We're seeing a gradual increase in ridership. And the CARES Act did help them. We haven't seen anything for our city, but that helped make the budget whole with the Capitol Corridor. Thursday, I attended the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting. One of the things reported was how much the marketplace is doing to support their businesses with things for COVID release, including buying masks and banners and signs and such. And then the only other thing of note is the financial report where they discussed using money that would have gone towards events, marketing and that such was being diverted to help with the COVID-19 efforts by the Sunrise Marketplace to help their businesses. Megan was there from our Economic Development Department, and she talked about what we're doing with it, Great Plates, the mall-specific plan, which is, we have a community workshop coming up June 30. And then on July 9, we have a joint City Council Planning Commission meeting. And I assume that's going to be on Zoom. And she also, we'll be discussing it later, so I won't go into detail, but she talked about the outdoor dining ordinance that we're going to consider tonight. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. The only thing I have is just to reiterate one thing that Steve mentioned, the next Tuesday, the 30th, five thirty to seven, we have a virtual Sunrise tomorrow community meeting. The last one was held at the actual Sunrise Mall. There was about two to three hundred people. So if you're interested, and we would like people's participation, please go to the city's website. And there is a way to register and get the invite for the Zoom meeting. So that was all I had.
So maybe, Mr. Mayor, we could do one, one more plug for our community to respond to the census.
Yes.
Yes, that's ongoing. That will affect funding for the next 10 years in Citrus Heights. So let's find out.
Yeah, it literally takes less than 10 minutes when you get out there to do it online. So thank you for that, Jeannie. All right, next item, Amy.
The next item is a public comment. And we do have one item for public comment from Brandon Quinn. And he says, I recently emailed the council asking what is being done to combat systemic racism by reforming Citrus Heights PD policies. I received an email from Councilman Brett Daniels informing me that actually nothing was being done. Daniels said, we do not have systemic racism in our police department. I've actually done the research, and unfortunately, he is incorrect. Citrus Heights received a grade of F from police scorecard.org. They rated us, they rated use of police violence here at 58%. In Citrus Heights, between 2016 to 2018, a black person was 3.4 times as likely, and a Latin person was 0.6 times as likely to have deadly force used on them than a white person. Only one in every 13 complaints were ruled in favor of civilians from 2016 to 2018. Police made 5.4 times as many arrests for misdemeanors as for violent crimes in 2016 to 2018. Now that we can all agree that we do have a problem here, I would like to repeat my question. What actions is this council taking right now to reform police behavior in Citrus Heights PD? Myself and my family have lived in Fair Oaks, Citrus Heights, for 30-plus years, and I'm ready to start my own family soon. If I am to stay here, spend money here, raise another generation here, I need assurance that this council will take action. Police reform is sweeping the country, and if we do not catch up, Citrus Heights will be on the wrong side of history. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy. And, you know, my only comment is, as we all know, numbers can tell many stories. Personally, I think it's disingenuous to take a specific timeframe and pull numbers. If you would really want to talk numbers, talk about the entire inception to now of the police department, and those are completely different numbers. So I'm just going to leave it at that. I think we have a great police department. And we'll move on. Next item.
The next item is consent calendar items five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Okay. Jeannie, do you have anything to add to those? I don't, I think you have a conflict on one of these.
I will, I'll move consent, but I will not be voting on item nine.
Okay, so you'll be abstaining on number nine regardless of how the other vote goes. Okay, thank you. So Ms. Bruins makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Portia, although I already got to do the roll call because of Zoom. Roll call, Amy, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye, abstain on nine.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Zoe.
Aye. So five through eight pass five zero nine passes four ayes, one abstention. Next item, please.
The next item is public hearing, item number 10. The subject is COVID relief actions. The recommendation is to introduce for a first reading an ordinance extending the expiration date for certain unexpired development projects by five years, and to adopt a resolution authorizing the creation of a temporary outdoor program to allow the use of outdoor space by temporarily relaxing the regulations for outdoor dining, signage, and parking through December 31, 2020.
Welcome, Allison. If you're talking, you're on mute.
How about now?
You're much better.
Oh, good. All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. What we have tonight are some actions to continue with our COVID recovery efforts, and just to kind of refresh what's been happening so far. And to add to this list, the city has been working with the community and providing information for our residents and our businesses on different health, on the health standards that's happening and keeping them up to date. We've linked the community to available resources that are available for recovery processes, promoting and supporting programs such as the Love Local and Great Place that we talked about earlier tonight, and then continuing to make city hall here for the community with our online permitting systems, licensing, and our video inspections. So we've done a lot of great things in these uncertain times, but we still have more to do. And so what we're presenting tonight are a couple new actions for us. One is an ordinance that we're going to be requesting you to approve that would extend our planning projects. And these are projects that have been approved but have not started construction yet. And then we also have a resolution to adopt the temporary program that will allow use of some outdoor spaces. First one would be the extension of entitlements. As you can imagine, the development community has been hit very hard by the pandemic. A lot of projects have stopped, offices have closed, workers aren't working towards their development project and activating their entitlements. And as you can imagine, these entitlements have taken quite a while to acquire. Many times, developers have a big investment of time and financial investment when they receive their planning entitlements. So we don't want them to go to the wayside and, and go, and to expire. So the ordinance we're presenting will extend these approvals beyond their current expiration dates. And so what we're talking about with these are planning projects that have been approved through the planning process, but they haven't started for construction. They haven't been issued a permit yet. So these are things like designer view permits, use permits, maps, and other land use entitlements. Currently, when an entitlement is issued, they're good for two years. An applicant can request an extension. They can get two one-year extensions, making a planning permit valid for a total of four years. The ordinance tonight will extend that to five years and give them a total of five years. So an example would be if a project was approved in August of 18, it would be expiring August of 20. So just shortly, they could, if their office was up and working and operating and tracking their entitlements, they could request an extension. But since many offices are basically shut down, we're afraid they won't recognize that need. So we are proposing this five-year extension that would go back to the original date. So the project would then still be valid now until August 1 of 2023. They would need to take no special steps to get that extension. It would be granted to them automatically. And as provided in the staff report is our list of the 21 projects that would qualify for that automatic extension. The second relief item, as mentioned, was the temporary outdoor program. You know, the state's Road to Recovery includes the reopening of restaurants and retailers, but encouraging the social distancing through business practice modifications, which for restaurants included a reduced occupancy. So they were required to close half the tables, not have counter seating, things like that. So that really reduced their ability to serve customers. And so the encouragement to use outdoor space for outdoor dining and seating was part of the roadmap to recovery. We do and have always encouraged the use of outdoor space through design review process and working with the applicant to define that space and how it's going to look and affect the community. But this program, we really wanted to roll out quickly, get it out to the community quick. So we created this program that's going to allow them to do that space, to use their outdoor space in a really effortless manner. So this, they could use their outdoor parking lots, their internal sidewalks, if they're in a center, to establish their dining space, curbs, side pickup areas, or package pickup areas. So this temporary outdoor program, as we're calling TOP, some of the highlights is that we've developed this guide that was presented to you in draft form in your packet that really had the specifics of how the site would lay out, the paths of travel, the width required, has some fire requirements in there, the spacing for tables, the types of umbrellas, and information like that. So the business can really just get that guide and follow it, get their area established and have it up and running. We're not going to require a permit. If they follow the guide, then they would meet our standards. Program is slated to run through December 30, 2020, and in the hopes that some of this outdoor space and activation of areas is successful, and they like to continue it past that period, then we'll go through our traditional permit process. But until that time, if they can follow the rules that are presented to them and guided to them, then they're good to go without our involvement. A couple special notes, as the businesses, you know, must obtain property owner approval. Many of them, you know, are leasing space, so they must work with their respective property owner to make sure that they are approving that. And then there are other agencies involved, not just the city. We have fire department, sewer district, ABC, if they have alcohol. And they still must meet all their requirements if those agencies have any specific to their uses. But hopefully, there's enough information in the guide that should they need to get a permit from fire, that would really be easy. That's it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions on either the ordinance or the resolution.
No, I, I think, I think it's good. And, you know, I've had a couple different organizations, restaurants ask me about outdoor dining. And so I think it's the right thing to do. I mean, and as far, I was at a place the other day, and, you know, they were serving drinks to go. So I can't believe the ABC wouldn't temporarily be fine with, you know, serving it on the sidewalk as opposed to, you know, allowing it in the cup and hop in your car. So it seems pretty straightforward to me. So good.
Aye.
Mayor, I have, I have more of a concern than a question. Allison, we don't really talk about safety of the outdoor diners. And I was a little concerned for allowing a setup in the parking lot of any kind of conflicts between the diners and, and vehicles, either intentionally or accidentally, you know, running into the tables. I would think we might want to stress some traffic barriers of some sort for anything that's down on the pavement where the vehicles are made. Up on the curb, I know a lot of places could just do outdoor on their sidewalk, I would think. But that was a concern I had reading this. The other one is I think we're a little brief in mentioning that businesses shall obtain property owner approval. That could mean a number of things. And I, and I think we kind of gloss it over with one sentence. It could mean insurance, you know, all kinds of things with, with the property owner. So we may allow them to do it quickly and cheaply, but it might not, in some of these bigger centers, there was concerns, they came up at the marketplace as well, with the major owners wanting to say in this.
So certainly, I can add additional information to the guide on the property owner approval.
Yeah, a little more, because there could be some cost involved.
Yeah.
If they, if they have to get insurance or whatever.
And then we do, we do encourage, but we don't require the use of removable barriers
I saw that.
So I could work on language on that if you, to make it a little, you know, then put on the safety side of it. So not to define the space, but to create safe space.
I don't know if we could put some planners out. I'm not saying, you know, they need K-rail or anything like that, the big concrete barriers. But some thought into the safety of the diners versus vehicles.
Yeah. And, well, I think that's a good idea. I think we should make suggestions, but I don't think it should be a requirement. I think each business needs to make that decision on their own.
Yeah, despite property, that's for sure.
Well, we want to, we, I don't think we want to put roadblocks up in front of the movement.
Exactly. No, 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 no.
I have a question regarding the ordinance, project extensions. I just, I'm sure it's clear, but, so we have that ability, that power at the local level. It doesn't interfere with anything that might be restricted by a state law or anything like that. We can do that? Okay. Just correct, I mean, clarify that?
Typically, in the past, like in 2009 and previous recessions, the legislature has stepped in, and they usually take action on maps, tentative maps and subdivision maps because of the significant investments by the developer, and have put in legislative action to extend those requirements. We haven't seen anything come down on that. You know, their, their methods of operations have somewhat been delayed as well. So this will, if they come down with something different, then we will abide by their times, and that would be if it's shorter. But other than that, this will take precedence until they do something, if they do something.
Okay. And I fully support it. I think it's a great idea. And then are we going to push information out to those 21 projects? I would think they're up to it, they're paying attention, that they're, you know, maybe even asking us. But I wouldn't want to just assume it and then have somebody think like, well, with all this, I'm just gonna, you know, just throw it away for now and whatnot. So it would be, I think, nice if we're pushing information towards the 21 projects, too.
Absolutely. We want, we want to let them know that we're granted this extension so they can keep the project alive and active. So, yeah, good point. We'll certainly do that.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Amy, did we receive any comments on this particular matter?
No, I did not receive any public comments.
All right. Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing and entertain the pleasure of the council.
I can make the first motion.
Go, go, see.
All righty. I move that we read by title only and waive the first full reading of this ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, extending the expiration date for those unexpired development projects by five years.
Second.
All right. Vice Mayor Miller made the motion, and Councilwoman Bruins seconded. Amy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Zoe.
Aye. And secondly, oh, Jeff, I'd like to make a second motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the creation of a temporary outdoor program to allow the use of outdoor space by temporarily relaxing the regulations pertaining to outdoor dining, signage, and parking through December 31, 2020.
Aye.
All right. Miller motion, Bruins second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins? Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Zoe.
Aye. All right, both motions pass, five zero. Fantastic. Next item, Amy.
Next item is department report number 11. The subject is fireworks operation plan, and the presentation will be by the Citrus Heights Police Department.
All right, CHPD is going to solve the world's fireworks problems between now and the fourth. So this is great. I'm looking forward to it. And I'm not sure who's presenting for the CHPD, but you have to go up mute.
Can you hear me now, sir?
Uh, we can hear you now.
Perfect. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm Lieutenant Christopher I with the Police Department. This evening, I will be providing you with a update on our 2020 fireworks enforcement plan. Now understandably, our community is wanting to uh, enjoy this holiday weekend after experiencing months of uh, being sheltered in their homes due to uh, COVID-19. The main uh, focus of our plan this year is to make sure that the community, while they're out, is uh, remaining safe. And we still want to uh, make sure that they're taking the necessary precautions to uh, include safe distancing while they're experiencing their holiday events. Now, our mission this year with the enforcement plan is to provide additional resources in order to identify and deter uh, the use of illegal fireworks, which commonly are brought into California from our neighboring states. Uh, the fireworks enforcement plan details can be held on Friday, July 3rd, and Saturday, July 4th. Currently, we have 21 firework enforcement, or excuse me, firework uh, stands that have been given permits in the City of Citrus Heights. Our focus is gonna have uh, more of a proactive approach this year rather than a reactive approach. And with that, we'll be utilizing technology to our advantage. And we're gonna be incorporating our UAS program that will include our UAS pilots and observers, and that will be teamed up with our other operators that are out on the uh, streets that are enforcing the fireworks. In order to uh, come up with this plan, what we did is we uh, we compiled data that we obtained over the last three years that determines basically the times that the city experiences the highest call volumes on uh, July 3rd and July 4th. Uh, info from previous years and the act- after action act, uh, excuse me, after action reports that we've obtained uh, is used to shift our resources around the city. We do have uh, specific locations, uh, that we've had uh, more problems with in the past that have been called in on multiple occasions. Um, so we will be selecting those locations and shifting our resources over to come, uh, problem areas to uh, try to prevent those from occurring this year. Um, the PD also is partnered with Sacramento Fire again this year. So we will have two units out on July 3rd and July 4th. The uh, the units will contain one arson investigator and three of our uh, directed patrol units. The third vehicle that we're gonna deploy out is again, gonna be that technology car that's gonna employ our UAS pilot and observer. Uh, on July 4th, Metro Fire will have three arson investigators in the county. They're gonna deploy one arson investigator in the north area, a second arson investigator's gonna be uh, deployed in the south area, and then the third is gonna be a roving uh, arson investigator. So they will be uh, available for us the entire weekend. In uh, preparation for this plan, we've also reached out to our partners, uh, with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department and their EOD team. Uh, they will be available and on call the entire weekend to respond out to Citrus Heights to help out uh, the department and the community for any needs that may arise uh, with them. Our patrol teams are gonna deploy out uh, both nights for the uh, the enforcement detail. And if anything is needed with them, our officers that are on, both our swing shift and our graveyard teams are going to go ahead and uh, supplement those teams as well. Some of the other, other items that uh, went into the preparation uh, for this particular enforcement detail uh, that we're doing here at the Police Department is we're ensuring that our officers are also provided with additional training to educate them on the laws uh, pertaining to illegal fireworks. Now, we're also utilizing social media uh, to our advantage. We're gonna be sending out educational information about the use of safe and sane fireworks. And that's also going to include uh, reporting of illegal fireworks on our tip line. Uh, we've already started that social media push uh, this past Tuesday. I would like to add and uh, make a plug that if you're calling to report illegal firework activity as it's occurring on July 3rd or 4th, and you have a particular address uh, where you believe that those fireworks are being deployed from, we encourage the community to call our non-emergency number, 916-727-5500. We also encourage the community to call our uh, crime tip line if they have a specific address that they know of that frequently sets off illegal fireworks or has set off illegal fireworks in the past. And that number for our crime tip line is 916-727-5524. I will say that uh, per the uh, the municipal code, uh, in Citrus Heights 38 dash 74, the city is uh, able to sell fireworks between noon on June 28th, and that's gonna continue uh, till 5 o'clock, or excuse me, after 10 o'clock until July 5th after the same year. That is including the time when fireworks can be deployed in the City of Citrus Heights. Again, any safe and sane fireworks that are uh, sold in the county can be deployed in Citrus Heights. And we ask the community if they have any intel regarding illegal fireworks that are being deployed off in the city to call one of the two numbers that I just mentioned. At this time, I would uh, open it up for any questions to the council, for uh, any questions pertaining to the fireworks operation.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Lieutenant Frye. I mean, the reality is, even with all the resources deployed, people are gonna hear some illegal fireworks. They're gonna see some illegal fireworks. You guys can't be everywhere. So that's why we're relying on the public for assistance, um, to track some of this down. So uh, you know, I, I get people complaining, but if you're gonna complain, help us out and give us the information. So CHPD can do follow-up and do their job, so. Any uh, questions or comments from the rest of the council? All right. Thank you, Lieutenant Frye. Keep safe, I think.
Thank you, sir.
Amy, next item.
The next item is city manager items.
I have none tonight. Thank you.
The next item is items requested by councilmembers or any future agenda items.
Anybody got anything? I don't. So obviously, if you recall last meeting, I was kinda talking about, you know, when we might be getting back in person. Of course, that was before all the cases started upticking. So more to come, but we're gonna continue like this for now until we can see things getting even better. I like my health. I like y'all, but I don't like you that much if you're gonna get me sick, so. All right. If nothing else, uh, we'll call it a night and uh, we'll be checking back in again. Congratulations to all our staff who are celebrating milestones. And with that, uh, everybody be uh, safe over the 4th. We'll talk to you after that. Thank you.